We're to steer, steer clear of the holiday, uh, group of Mike Blair on that tether sax folks. This is a straight ahead, uh, swing tune called Skept. We're featured Holly, have a shot on Alton Sax on, uh, take, our take on Police Not Yet. Santa Baby. Santa Baby will not be featuring Holly yet. Santa Baby, uh, we're featured Heather, Mike, DJ, Brandon, and Logan. But here we go, Santa Baby. One. Two, and one, two, three. We're featured Holly, have a shot on Alton Sax on, uh, take, our take on Police Not Yet. Santa Baby. Santa Baby will not be featuring Holly yet. Santa Baby, uh, we're featured Heather, Mike, DJ, Brandon, and Logan. But here we go, Santa Baby. One. Two, and one, two, three. Hey guys, I was, I was walking around in the back there, uh, during this song, I saw the agenda and realized that I might've drunk the gun, so I'm sorry if I messed up your, your meeting.
You're fine.
Sorry about that. So, uh, we're gonna wrap up our, uh, our portion here with, uh, Police Not Yet featuring Holly. One, two, one, two, ready, go. Thanks for having us, very, very much.
You're welcome.
Again, we'd like to thank the Northwest High School Jazz Band, directed by Mr. Brian, and I'm gonna butcher your name, Moga Gilano. The Northwest High School Jazz Band practices every day before school starts and plays at many events around the community. Thank you again for coming. And parents who brought them, thank you very much also. On that happy note, I would like to call the Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, December 17th, 2013 to order, with the invocation by Dr. Reverend Frank Rupenick, the third Brooklyn Presbyterian Church. Reverend? All rise.
Please join me now in prayer. O mighty God, we turn to you as believers, as Christians, and as people of faith. We acknowledge that we don't have all the answers, and in doing so, we pray to you in the same manner as our forefathers did, out of humility and respect. We turn to you to recognize your power over our lives. We are humbled by your presence, and we ask that you give us wisdom and guidance in the decisions that we make. Guide us in the decisions we make as elected leaders of our community, the decisions we make as citizens of this great and free nation, and the decisions we make as people of faith. We ask that you be with our service members overseas who fight for the freedoms we enjoy, and ask that you protect them in their efforts. Wherever we are, in whatever capacity we serve, help us to remain confident in our cause and committed to you, our Lord, Jesus Christ. We further ask people of all faiths to stand together, united not by doctrine or creed, but by the recognition that we need God in our lives. Help us to remain steadfast, humble, and forever mindful of the many ways you have blessed us. We ask that you continue to bless us this season and throughout the year. To you we give all honor, glory, and praise, both now and forever. Amen.
Is it with great humility and an honor that I ask third-year midshipman Victoria Overton to join us at the pedestal and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Lachka?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Commissioner Palacek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chowell?
Here.
All present.
Thank you.
Are there any communications or petitions to come before the Board of Commissioners this evening? Oh, I'm sorry. I stand corrected, uh, I would like to motion to approve the agenda that's presented. We have a motion by Commissioner Mahoney?
Support.
We have support from Commissioner Alexander. Are there any items to be deleted or added to the agenda at this time? Seeing none, all in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. Now, any communications or petitions to come before the board? Seeing none? We have no special orders nor public hearings. This time we've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Please step forward and state your name and speak to what you would, is important.
Good evening, uh, my name is Joe Beaman, I'm a Jackson County resident. I live, uh, over on Probert Row with my wife and three kids. And I'm actually, uh, here today just because I did, uh, I've recently moved back to Jackson, I've been, uh, I've worked for the Department of Corrections for the last 12 years in a variety of different capacities all over the state. Um, I graduated from Jackson High School, born and raised in Jackson, graduated from Spring Arbor University, um, but this is my first opportunity to actually be home for any extended period of time as it related to my career. Um, and I did, uh, I, I've been in public service now, working for the fine, uh, residents and people of the state of Michigan now for the last 12 years, but I did, uh, I threw my hat in the ring for a few, a few committees because I would like to offer my services to the commission, um, and, and the people of Jackson, uh, Jackson County in any way that I can, that I can possibly do so. Um, two specifically was the, uh, Community Corrections. Ironically enough, I, I feel like I have a, a variety of different, uh, wealth of information as it relates to corrections in general. Uh, and I do understand that this is my first, this is my first, uh, time before you, um, but I would, I would just take this opportunity to, uh, moving forward in the future, uh, when appointments and things like that, uh, come up, um, I'm sure that you'll see me. Um, I, I plan on making a, at a point to, uh, figuring out how I can, uh, reinsert myself into the community here in Jackson. Like I said, I've been away, I've been working Detroit for the last year. Um, I'm a parole violation specialist, that's what I do, I prosecute parole violators for the department. I recently took that appointment in, uh, in Detroit and opened up the Detroit Reentry Center. I've been working there for the last year. Uh, I did start as an officer with the Department of Corrections, so I've worked, I've worked just about everywhere you could work as an officer. Uh, I worked as a Assistant Resident Unit Manager, I managed a housing unit inside an institution. I worked as a parole agent, parole probation agent out in the field, and then this final, uh, promotion was to the parole violation specialist position. So I, I would, I just wanna take this opportunity to introduce myself, uh, so that when future requests for myself, for appointments, I did also something with the, uh, Jackson Parks and Recreation Department, um, and just a real quick snippet on that, I feel it's kind of important for me to bring up. I grew up going to these parks here in Jackson. I played in Optimus Football at Ellis Shar Park with some historic gangs against, uh, games against the exchange, uh, and, 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 uh, Kibbe and Loomis Park. And my kids now play soccer here in, in Jackson, and I have to say, um, I've lived in a lot of different places, I've lived in Atlanta, and I've lived in Houston, I've lived in, uh, I've been in Detroit for the last year. And I say over and over again to people that I meet, uh, Jackson has some of the most beautiful parks in, in, in the nation, quite honestly, uh, for the size of our community, uh, Ellis Shar Park is beautiful, Cascades is beautiful, if you drive around our lake system, Vandercook Lake, I grew up, uh, I, I, I grew up in Vandercook Lake, uh, so I have, I have a, a true love for the, for the park system there. As, I'm sure as, as I move along, there'll be other things that I, I wanted to do, but I did, I just wanna take this time just to introduce myself briefly to you all. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone, it's kinda fun being on this side of, um, of the podium for a change. Um, I think you're all aware of the fact that, um, I did serve on, uh, uh, Jackson County Fair Board as a county commissioner appointment, and...
Your name is, sir?
Oh, Jim Vettito, Spring Arbor Township, I forgot, sir, but I also had about a five-minute and ten, uh, five-minute, 10-second presentation, just so I could hear your famous words, "You are now out of time," but I'm gonna cut it short tonight. Um, I've had a passion for the fair for many, many years, and I put my application in for, to return to that board, and I would appreciate your consideration. And besides that, have a Merry Christmas and a safe holiday. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Seeing none? We've now arrived at the opportunity for a special meeting of the Standing Committee of Agencies and Affairs, the Resource Recovery Facility Budget 2014. Commissioner Elwell, if you'd like to have your meeting, and we'll stand adjourned until you're done. Seeing none? We've now arrived at the opportunity for a special meeting of the Standing Committee of Agencies and Affairs, the Resource Recovery Facility Budget 2014. Commissioner Elwell, if you'd like to have your meeting, and we'll stand adjourned until you're done. Call us back to order? Entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the November 19th, 2013 meeting. I have a motion in support. Any corrections? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We've arrived at the consent agenda.
What consent agenda do you want?
I have a motion from Commissioner Mahoney, support from Commissioner Elwell. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, could you post the, the vote? No. On your screen, my friend.
He got it.
Consent agenda has passed unanimously. Standing committees, the first to report out will be Agencies and Affairs, Chairman Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, we have a number of appointments. The first appointment is a seat to the Airport Board. The current member is John Feldberry, applicant is John Feldberry, and the recommendation from committee is John Feldberry.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing any? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Chairman Elwell?
Excuse me, we have four seats for the Hospital Finance Authority, if it's acceptable. We have four positions, four applicants, and four recommendations. We can do them all at once if you'd like, or in one fell swoop.
I'll entertain a motion to that.
I have a motion in support.
Is there any objections to this? Seeing no hearing, none? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to that. We have a motion in support. Is there any objections to this? Seeing no hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried.
Next, we have the District Library Board. The seat is currently Ted Coleman. He is the applicant and also the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried.
Next up is the Fair Board. It's a seat currently occupied by Tom Finko, who did not reapply. The applicant is Jim Vitto, as well as the recommendation from committee, Mr. Jim Vitto.
We have a motion in support. Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, with reluctance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried.
Next up is the Parks Board. Again, we have two seats occupied by Jan Seats and Russ Youngdal. Russ has not reapplied. The applicants, Jan Seats and Joseph Beaman, who are both the recommendations for these two seats.
We have a motion in support. Do we have any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried.
Next up, we have two seats that do not have applicants, no recommendations, the Region 2 Planning Commission and the Traffic Safety Commission. I think Commissioner Alexander probably has a couple she's talked to that'll apply next month, so hopefully we'll be able to fill those. And lastly, we have the Steering Committee, one commissioner member, and the recommendation is the applicant, John Palachek.
Any, any, any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Congratulations, Jonathan. Commissioner Elwell?
Moving on, we have the item just voted on as a standing committee, the Enterprise Fund Budget for the Resource Recovery Facility, which also move...
We have a motion in support. Administrator Elwell, would you like to answer any questions or anything, if there are any, from commissioners?
You mean Administrator Overton, I assume?
Yeah, that's it, yeah. Overton.
Or Commissioner Overton, or...
Looking at you instead, Elwell. Sorry about that. Any questions from commissioners? Not yet, Phil. Seeing none, we have a motion in support for the budget of the Enterprise Fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried.
That's all I have to report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Standing committees, Human Services? Chairman Alexander?
We have no business to bring before the Board.
Standing committee Personnel and Finance, Vice Chairman of the Board, Phil Duckin. Chairman?
Mr. Chair, we have no business to conduct tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Any unfinished business to come before the Board? Seeing none? New business. Any new business to come before the Board? Seeing nor hearing none, we've arrived at the second round of public comment.
Thank you. John Feldberry, Airport Board Member, certainly. Thank you for your support and reappointment to the Board, and I wish all of you a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Well, with reluctance, thank you for the appointment to the Jackson County Fair Board, and have a great holiday. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for the appointment, and I'd like to thank the gentlemen for providing me with the prompt to appropriately address you after the appointment to the Board. Thank you very much.
I'd like to wish you all Merry Christmas. And one thing I'd like to see that's going on, I'd like to see you keeping this prayer going forward. I read in the paper where you're gonna stand up to it. I'm for it because...
Could you please identify yourself, sir?
Uh, let's see, I'm out of the North Country out here, Cliff Earl, Ryb's Township. But I like to see this going forward, and I think it's very good because it makes you think about things positive. And if, you know, if people don't think of things right, you know, I was thinking today, you know, you think about the Lord's Prayer once in a while, if these people don't like, you know, to talk about church or something like that, why don't they use it as their vision statement? You know, that'd be good for them. And also, you know, like the Ten Commandments, they wanna take this down. Why don't they put this up? This is my rules of life. And you know, one other thing, you know, these guys, I don't know how they spend our money, because on that it says "God and we trust." So, I don't know, what do they do? Write a check on them and use plastic all the time? So, I got, that's what I feel about. And I just want to wish you all Merry Christmas, and I miss all that, working with you.
Any other public comment? Commissioner comments? Commissioner Alexander?
I would like to just publicly thank midshipman Overton, and thank you for your service to our country.
Commissioner Lachka?
I'd like to echo that. Plus, tomorrow at nine o'clock, I believe, is the open house at the new snow equipment building at the airport. The Airport Board and the Advisory Council will have a joint meeting, and the building will be open to the public for inspection.
Any other Commissioner comments? I'd like to take this opportunity to thank this Board for putting their trust in me for this last year. We are a group of diverse people with many different ideas who can share those ideas and as well as voice our concerns. I know we all, in our heart of hearts, represent the people and our constituents. Again, I want to thank you and Merry Christmas. At this time, we are adjourned.